Let's get started. I'd like to ask questions on a few loose ends. Before the break, we talked about two point seven C. Sometimes there could be discrepancies between what is expected and the actual outcome. And in some cases, there are such variances. The commissioner is yet to come back. But earlier, he said that applicants are not required to indicate the number of training hours and other objective indicators. And in terms of the, uh, what the only information required is the um level of competition and the funds required. Some applicants would lay out their objectives, expectations, and training hours clearly. Such information is of good nature, but from the perspective of the audit, if something is written down, then it must be met. Like Mr. Steven Ho said, there was no indication of expectations or targets on the application form. So I hope this is something to be improved. Apart from looking at the level of competition and the funding requirement, would you clearly stipulate the funding requirements? And which would be um information provided voluntarily for reference? But that would not form part of the vetting criteria. Commissioner, Secretary? In terms of clarifying our vetting criteria, after the competitions, um they would have to show whether they have achieved the objectives. So in the future application form, these must be clarified to avoid some of the current issues of um non-reporting. The recommendations they stated um are certainly conducive, but um we would have to follow up on their objectives as well. So in terms of communication and workflow, we would see how these can be reinforced.
The secretary already made it clear. We will see what information needs to be provided. Uh, we will consider what Mr. Paul Che suggested. Now, if you want some numeric um criteria or even training hours, even for the same sport and uh different competitions, how can we set suitable criteria for different events? This is something we will consider. But if it's not necessary, then it won't appear in the forms. It will only be uh key performance indicators. I understand different sports events or individuals will have different uh considerations. But uh if you're just looking at money or something, then perhaps you could uh indicate their requirement. Uh, have you really actually looked at their indicators or do they inflate their achievements and the bigger they inflated, the more funding they receive? If you're talking about preparation, they compete in uh Asian events, regional events. We have a funding uh budget. As long as they are eligible, we will support them. But if they state goals or outcomes, this is just to strengthen or enhance the persuasiveness of their application. Some might want to uh talk about training hours to justify why they seek funding. Uh, it's supplemental information. It's the, but the training hours are not so part of our assessment criteria. So do you look at uh the embellished, uh the embellished portion? Well, as long as they comply with our funding principles, we will consider them. Uh regarding supplemental information, s- some information might uh assist us, but it's not our main consideration. So could you tell us what are your assessment criteria and what are supplemental parts? S- or uh can you clarify s- certain items will not be considered? For example, preparation fees. It depends on what class of competition. Is it a world championship? They have to prove that they are preparing for these events. So that is the main criteria. Uh, and then we have more detailed questions. Uh, they have eligible items and there are then s- subheads. But the principle is it depends on what class of competition. So Commissioner, he, you uh are a performance based, uh but we have a legal or accounting background. So I hope you don't mind that uh we are asking for a lot of details. Uh, we want to clarify what, which parts are supplemental and which parts are your assessment criteria. Well, Chairman, allow me to refer to page thirty-four, case one. We spent some time on the same applicant, the grantee items A to H. Uh, they had a late return of unspent balance, so there were criticisms. Why do we have uh this repeat offender? Uh, I want to understand. Aside from waiting, waiting, and more waiting, s- in certain cases, it's more than one and a half years. Uh, I'd like to ask, in your follow-up work, what did you actually do? Uh, when, how often do you send warning letters? Uh, when will you hand it over to the G O, DOJ if, if that ever occurred? I'd like the commissioner to elaborate. Chairman, if they are late in returning unspent balances typically within, after four to eight weeks, we will urge payment. If there's no response, we will uh chase them more frequently. Uh, and we have issued warnings. Uh, but as we explained, under our guidelines, in this respect, we don't have penalties. So we're going to strengthen this in the future. So we want to have some deterrent. So the largest penalty, Chairman, would be, would you consider uh not granting future applications? So just like government tenders, if they don't comply with guidelines, the, then they can be blacklisted and uh, uh even those, even though uh these bodies might have a background. So if they are late in certain areas of their work, so we will defer their applications in the future. So would individual sports associations, uh are they monopolies, even though they're not exactly uh uh, even though they're not exactly an evil force, they might have their way uh in the industry? So so out of considerations for athletes' welfare, would it make your work difficult? Chairman, in dealing with so many applications or other subventions, we have not uh run into the circumstances you described. A lot of NSA's are cooperative. I mentioned one case where they were frequently late. That is a very special case. And I cannot uh uh go into the details. Uh, could you name and shame, just like the Consumer Council? Uh, we don't have such a mechanism right now. It, it's handled internally. I mentioned whether we can have penalties such as deferring new applications. That might be more effective. In paragraph two point two one B, we were referring to case one. In two point two one B, you say some grantees were repeatedly late, not just case one. When you say some, how many cases? Or is this just a particularly egregious case? Do we have other subvented bodies who have been similar to case one where they are, are repeatedly late? Well, we said uh case one is a very special case. Other applicants, they would be late, but not repeatedly late. Uh, they are individual cases. Uh, Commissioner? We have audit reports that are late by ten months. And after the audit report, we also have cases uh that were late in returning unspent balances. So you add it up, it's twenty months uh in other people's pocket, and not in your pocket. So you have to be careful in dealing with these cases. We are aware, Chairman. In page thirty-five, table ten, Mr. Kenneth Lung asked why do we have so many, why we have late unspent balances being returned and we heard the phrase that there's a lot of back and forth communication. So you've issued warning letters and we've now required a more detailed investigation into application four involving the sum of four hundred and twenty-two thousand. Well, we have to look into that. What do we mean by back and forth communication? That was one example I gave. A subvented body. Whether it was an eligible item for returning to the government, we had different views. We uh expressed our opinion to the NSA. The NSA might have disagreed. So there would be a process of negotiation regarding the item and ultimately, if it was determined that uh it should be returned, the finance report would have to be amended. So that's why I said it was back and forth. There was a negotiation. Well, every legislator faces back and forth communication with the Legco Accounting Department regarding legislators' expenses. We understand that. But uh it should be resolved in two or three months. Uh, is it because the two parties are of equal standing and uh the back and forth takes more time? Why do you take more time? Commissioner? Uh, I was referring to a phenomena. I'm not referring to the case in table ten. That case might not necessarily be handled by us. So we have to look into the details of the case uh uh to elaborate. Now, I'm not uh so referring specifically to application four in table ten. I'm just s- asking. Is it because the sum involved is not particularly large? Of course, uh, application four involves a little bit more money. So are, are you not paying enough attention to the the work? No, we are very careful with public funds. Uh, the, the NSA feels uh might have a different view and feel that the, the item is not eligible for returning. So typically, it does not uh go as long as eleven months. Usually, it's just a few months. Chairman, last area in table six, page twenty-eight. There was a question about a variance in the funding. The explanation given was that, oh, we cannot have very accurate figures. We don't want uh the athletes to have undue pressure when uh so how long does an application usually take from submitting their fu- uh application to receiving the fund? How long does it usually take? Chairman? For large events, we the applicants need to know in advance whether they uh uh can receive funding. So usually, they can receive funding three months before the event. Uh, we can handle it very quickly if they submit the full set of information. Usually, it can be handled within a few weeks, within a few weeks. Is it three, five, eight, ten, fifty weeks? If their information is complete, usually, we can handle it within four to six weeks. Now, if we have preliminaries, then they might not be able to uh be able to receive the money in uh they might not be able to make the application in four to six weeks. But if we have events in phases, but let's say between preliminaries and semifinals, it might, uh, this gap might be a few months. So could you stagger the funds? Chairman, if you're talking about the Olympics, a large event, they need to have overseas, the overseas qualifications. But the individual items um are only concentrated in a few days. And when they make an application, it depends on the event. So they the S F O C, the organizing body, will have to do all the calculations and submit their applications. But for individual items, they make some estimates. Some might be a bit optimistic. They feel they can enter the semifinals and finals. And some people might have a shorter horizon. We also look at their past record and information to see whether it is reasonable. They might be more optimistic and ask for a longer period of funding. But we do, it is based on actual expenditure. So during your assessment, we uh are go- you're going to fund them or you're going to stagger the funding? S- if you can make it clear, then the Audit Commission can look at the staggered approach and we won't have such a large variance. We can see that you were just funding them according to the phases. It would minimize the variance. Is that feasible? We will review our past cases. There are many different sports events. We'll have to see. So the Audit Commission suggested we need to explain the variance. If uh the competition is in phases, we can also look at uh that. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I think uh part two is almost over and uh we can summarize that the government and Audit Commission needs to submit some information. We need to consider that before we draft our report. And we've heard the government's promise that they would undertake improvement measures. You will review the funding process for athletes who are participating in overseas events. So I hope after this hearing, you can give us a timetable. Uh, uh, because uh speaking on behalf of the Chairman, we won't relax our scrutiny after this uh report. We will be looking into the coming year or two whether you ha- you have implemented your pledges. It, uh, the P A C will continue its operations and uh will monitor your work. If we don't have questions regarding part two, I'd like uh to uh uh allocate more time to part three. Now, part three, I can say the funding model or uh monitoring, there are some similarities. Of course, in part three, funding for international sports events. Let me set the overall uh background uh from page thirty-two to thirty-five. Uh, I'd like the public to understand we have three types of international events. Uh M events, local, large events, and third is local, international events. So our fund, A S D F, fund for these three types of events, uh, we have different levels of funding.
How about we take a look at table twelve? This clearly lists out the funding support. For the M for the M M E, I think um the Cross Harbor Women's Event is part of M M E and I participated in that event for three consecutive years. Table twelve. Uh, that is the largest event and to the left, you see the maximum amount of grant per event. So the uh, so the highest amount is six million per event. And then second, you see that there is actually it is a matching grant. Can you share with us what you mean by matching grant in twenty nineteen? Commissioner?
So there is direct grant and a matching grant. So the matching grant would be a bit lower, the ceiling being three million. In twenty nineteen, we introduced a new matching grant. The so around uh five million was earmarked by the Financial Secretary and the highest amount you can get uh per organization is ten million. So that is actually including both direct grant and matching grant. And that is actually a quite high. So let's say you get a total of ten million. These organizers can still receive commercial sponsors. Am I correct? So let's say for matching grant, they receive five million, then we will also give them five million. If they receive uh ten million, then we'll also give them ten million. Let's say if they're able to receive equal commercial sponsor, then they can get an am- amount exceeding ten million. The government will only give up to ten million in total. All right, I understand the mechanism. Let us now move on to table thirteen. Table thirteen shows the vetting and monitoring procedures for international sports events. And of course, that include M M Es, M L I Es and L I Es. Uh, let me continue focusing on M M Es, the M mark events. In the table, you see under B, vetting of applications. The M S E C's vetting panel will be comprised of a convener who is a member of M S E C, a representative of H A B or L C S D, and three other members of M S E C. How many members are there in this vetting panel and how do you appoint these three other members of M F C C? By lottery or how do you pick them? All right, now, uh, there are sixteen members in the M S E C. The vetting panel convener will be chosen by the members themselves. And that's a fixed convener. Other members can voluntarily participate. Well, how do you pick these sixteen members? Are they appointed by the H A B or appointed by the C E? Um, the H A B will appoint the members. And they, so we have ex-official members nominated uh by sports organizations. So there's one ex-official member. Is there a declaration of interest after their appointment? Yes. And when they are vetting a major event, do they also need to declare their interest once again? Yes, yes. Now, I'd like to focus on table three, focusing on M M Es. Oh, sorry, it's table fourteen. So table fourteen shows the assessment criteria for M M E and M L I E. A, B, C are not applicable to M M Es. Can you share with us the assessment? Can you share with us the assessment criteria for um the difference? Criteria for M M E and M L I E. Why would there be a different assessment criteria? And does this criteria apply to? All international sport events supported by this fund? Well, there are three levels of international events. M. M Es are the highest level and there are two other levels called major local international events, M L I E and local international events, L I E. For M mark events, the um highest ceiling of grant will be ten million. For M L I E, only around one million. So that's actually a huge difference. Uh Mister. Uh Mister Young, um many people are watching our live cast. Can you share with us what you mean by M M Es? Well, um there are around twelve to fourteen M M Es per year. For example, the Hong Kong Rugby Sevens. Um Hong Kong, Hong Kong Open for golf. And also the Hong Kong Marathon and so forth. So there are around ten or such events per year. Let me explain why A B C are not applicable to M M Es. M M Es are divided into two levels. One is that you need to attain a certain. Um level. For example, World Games. Last year, uh there was a uh World Game on rowing. Which occurred. In a harbor. So you must have attained a certain achievement before you are eligible for that event. So there may not be a difference in the senior or junior level. For B, as this is World Games. Or a world competition, you do not need to really look at the anticipated number of participating countries. And for C, now we may have Hong Kong athletes for some, but for some we do not. For Hong Kong Rugby Sevens. Uh we do have Hong Kong athletes, but then for some other large events, we do not have any Hong Kong athletes. So this talks about the. This is not something that we can uh decide on. And so they are not assessed under the criteria. To the right, for major international events, the M L I Es. These are smaller scale uh local international events and they are vetted by L C S D and H A B. Uh perhaps L C S D can also elaborate. Thank you, Chairman. For the vetting of M L I Es and L I Es. Uh they are similar in certain aspects. Yet the assessment would be conducted by L C S D. And the grant, of course, would be much. Lower. For example, for. M L I Es and the ceiling would be one million dollars for international events. You would be able to get um. Um seven hundred fifty thousand for three events and three hundred fifty thousand per event. Alright. So M L I E is vetted by the L C S D. Alright, so this, uh the M S E C is only responsible for M M E vetting. Am I correct? Yes. Alright, so the first three assessment criteria do not apply to M M E. But for D two K, I see that there are five scores. To five points to fifteen points for each of these. So together with the convener, there would be four. Persons on the vetting panel and each would give their scores. So do you take the average of? All these scores or how how do you calculate them? Well, yes, it's an average. Uh you would add up all the points and then divide them by four. So if the score is over eighty, then that that event will be eligible for a fun for funding. So all four members would sit together in a room to work on that. Or would they do it offsite? Is there a secretariat supporting their work? Can you share with us the procedures for the vetting? Well, usually, they would do their own scoring unless. It's a new event. As that might require them to sit together and understand more about the details of the event. Uh for uh usual events that occur every year, then they would score them individually. Would L C S D provide training or briefing to the members in advance? Well, you can just ask them to score as they wish. You need to give them a certain criteria. Because some may be very str- uh stringent, some may be very relaxed. So before the members take on this job, do you provide them with a briefing? And not all members are familiar with the events. You may say that these events. Occur every year, such as a marathon or the cross harbor swim, but then. They may not be the ones scoring these events each year as it is all on a volunteer voluntary basis. So if you do not have a basic briefing, then. The scores might see huge discrepancies. With the secretariat will explain it to members in advance. And uh we actually provide details. Let's say ten is the. Uh total score and then we would show them how to score and they understand the range of scoring. When you invite these people to become members, well. How do you come up with these nominations? How do you pick these candidates? Well, we would consider the experience, the familiarity with the sector. Uh their contribution to the community. We look at many aspects. Any appointed. Um member for governance organizations would go through the same considerations. So how how long is their tenure? Uh the longest one is six years. Each term is two years. And the. Maximum time is six years. Did any member work over the six years limit? No. Alright, now I'd like to go back to case two. So this is on page thirty-three in the Chinese version. And so this is actually not an M M E, it's instead a M L I E. It's a major local international event. In paragraph two. It stated that the one of the sub-criteria, the criterion. Is timelessness and submission program report and audit report before the deadline, which is mandatory requirement. And an applicant's failure in timely submission of the required reports according to H A B guidelines will not obtain any score in the criteria. However, we see in the case that this applicant also received a score. And they received a score of eight, actually. Well, I've asked a commissioner whether there's a briefing before the scoring. This M L I E should be vetted by the H A B. Oh, no, this is under L C S D, alright. So I need to know. Who is in charge of scoring the M L I E here? How many people made up the vetting panel? There is committee in charge of the assessment of M L I E and that is the um deputy commissioner together with our colleagues. Uh we can look at um page forty-one, which is table fourteen and there's actually. A a criteria. And we can decide then whether uh we should support the event. Well, since that is handled by internal staff, then they should be more. Clear about the assessment criteria. Just now I asked a commissioner about the vetting for M M E because they. Are all external um people, but now you're talking about. Internal vetting, as this is a late application, there should be zero in scoring. Did you not do due diligence? It's not an individual who's scoring the application. It's actually a team of people. Commissioner, or ask. Or director. Uh actually, there was a delay of one month in the submission of one of one of the program reports. Why did we still score it? We can see that right now there is a requirement that applicants must provide a report within four months. However, there is another requirement, which is actually our fine-tune measures that. A delay of six months would incur a surcharge of one percent. So this report was submitted to us in five months. In between the four months and six months, it's still considered a reasonable. Time period. Therefore, our colleagues did not disqualify this applicant and the score was given. Even though they were awarded scores. Oh, sorry, it is because of this reason that we still awarded a score of eight to these cases. So all the reports have been submitted. It's just a delay of five months. Is that the case for all these cases, Commissioner? We considered their past records. In their timeliness in submission of program report in the past. Uh we know about their past records that maybe they usually submit in five months. So you did consider that a score should be awarded to these applicants. So if that's the case, why do you set a assess an assessment criteria? Well, now you see there's two level of uh penalty. Uh first penalty, you do not score them. Second level penalty, you charge a penalty of one percent. So how can you just? Um put aside the first layer. Of. Criteria. I mean, that is not acceptable.
Director. The enhancement measure was installed in twenty fifteen. In the past, um there was only um the four months requirement and a subsequent um tier of six months was introduced. As to um which standard we should adhere to, we would discuss with the Home Affairs Department on whether. There should be a unified standard. I would not accept this as an explanation. You should um not assign any score and step a penalty. There are two different standards. Even with the one percent penalty in grants money, you. Must still enforce the um policy of awarding no score. You cannot confuse. Both standards. Like I said, this arrangement is worth reviewing. So that our staff and applicants would have standards to follow. I believe both should be enforced. That way applicants would be encouraged to submit reports on time. You can not only apply a penalty. While awarding a score. I have no other questions on case two. Table fifteen. Delay in submission of program reports. Apparently, this has become a trend. The larger the project, um the longer the delay. This is a trend. For. L I Es. Only ten percent. Of the cases had delays in submission for M M Es and M L I Es. In twenty fourteen to fifteen, for M L I Es, one hundred percent of the reports and accounts were submitted late. And the latest figures were about seventy percent. The current requirement is for submission within four months after the events. Of course, the events are of different scale F and complexity. I'm not encouraging you to change the standard since there are lots of late submissions. The complexity in M M Es and M L I Es are very different, but yet the um same standard of four months apply. For listed companies. The deadline for submission is three months to the Hong Kong Exchange. For M M Es, their governance should not be worse than listed companies. The four months requirement has been basically ignored. Would you consider allowing a longer submission window for M M Es? For the preparation of program reports and audited accounts. You said after the enhancement measure was adopted, the situation improved. The delay went from five point one months before. Implementation to four point two months after implementation. It was still not ideal. Indeed, um these major events are complicated. Would you consider adjusting the submission standards of program reports and all these accounts for M M Es? The figures show that for M M Es, despite the. Enhanced measures, um the scope of shortening the delay is still limited. When it comes to major and mega events. We might need to give them enough time to obtain the audited or compile the audited accounts. And um the situation is different from smaller local events or L I Es. But having said that, we do have enhanced measures in place. For L I Es and M L I Es. We saw substantial improvement, but having said that, we must examine their situation. We will we will review the entire system. We will, we will review the entire system to see um whether we can suitably relax some requirements. So we would follow up on these and we will come up with, with new recommendations. How long would the review take? We expect to come up with preliminary suggestions in a month or so. And we will report the details to members. I'd like to look at the returning of surpluses and unspent balance. These have to do with project surpluses and unspent grants. And this is from paragraph three point two four and the subsequent paragraphs. In three point two four A, for MMEs, the surplus is the total amount of incomes, including commercial and private sponsorship ticket sales and ASDF grants minus the total amount of expenditures of the event. For MMEs, the surplus must be returned to the government. Is that the correct interpretation? Chairman? For an MME, if there is a surplus, it can it can be absorbed into their reserves. The point is to um encourage them to hold the events every year. Are you referring to their own account? You don't know how they are going to spend the money, right? Do you know the um, if the surplus actually went into their account? Yes, we do realize that after they open an account, um, the surplus every year would go into that account, which is reflected in the audited accounts and they must obtain our consent before they can use the reserves. Are these MMEs held annually? Apparently, some are not held every year. So how are we going to do with, deal with those? I'm referring to annual events. Um, for the one-off events, um, there would not be an arrangement of creating a, an event. For the FINA, Hong Kong Leg, um, it is not held in Hong Kong every year. How would you deal with this? For the government grants, if there is a surplus, it must be returned to the government. You are talking about the um government grants portion excluding the commercial sponsorships, right? For three point two four A, um, there's a formula. The surplus is defined for FINA, Hong Kong Leg, if there is a surplus of five hundred thousand dollars. Would you distinguish the um portion of government grants and the portion of com- commercial sponsorship and ticket sales? Well, I'm a little confused. I don't know how you can calculate the ticket sales. When you look at the ticket sales, government grants and commercial sponsorship, if you have a surplus of fif- of five hundred thousand dollars, how can you calculate the amounts to be returned to the government? After deducting the expenditures, if there is a surplus, the unspent portion of the government grants must be returned. The surplus portion must be returned to the government. There are three components to the funding. The five hundred thousand dollars would not be fully returned to the government because the government might only have funded three million and they generated, say, one million in ticket sales and another three million in commercial sponsorship. So it's three and one and three. That is the ratio. And if the eventual surplus is five hundred thousand dollars, are you going to divide five hundred thousand dollar by seven or by six? How is it going to be done? Chairman? This is a hypothetical case. Well, the problem is very real. As a professional, I would produce the most um realistic example. This is a hypothetical case. Um, perhaps we would illustrate the arrangement with a real case. And the idea is we want to offer the right information. Every time we are looking at unique cases, when you calculate your surplus, you must explain the methodology to your team. Can your staff um illustrate how the surplus is calculated for the standard and chartered Hong Kong Marathon? The surplus would be vested in an account. For one-off events, you would claw back the surpluses. So how is it calculated? Three point two four A does not provide guidelines. I'd like to know whether um you have implemented the government standards. For MLIEs and LIEs, you did not calculate income. Is that the correct interpretation? The amount to be returned is only the unspent balance. Is that right? Commissioner? The income of these events are part of the overall accounts. The expenditure minus the ineligible items would be the amounts to be returned to government. Apparently, that's not my understanding. I just asked about MMEs. The commissioner will have to produce the methodology. For MLIEs and LIEs, how are the refund amounts calculated? Director of Audit? Thank you. We have used different terms such as surplus and unspent balance. Surplus incorporates all the incomes generated. And for M mark events, some, the surpluses must be returned to the government, but not for the other events. After deducting the eligible items from the government funds, the um balance would have to be returned. And for some events, um, government funding is not needed. There might be different policy considerations, so I hope the government can explain why there are two different formulas to calculate the sums to be returned to the government. Who would take this question? Commissioner? For M mark events, they are often of a much larger scale. So in terms of securing commercial sponsorships and ticket sales, um, they would um generate substantial incomes. For tier two and three competitions or games, they are less appealing. And the commercial sponsorship and ticket sales income would be negligible. For MMEs, we encourage organizers to um secure commercial sponsorships. For the rugby sevens, ticket sales are substantial, so they should in, they should be included in the accounts. When there is a surplus, it must be returned to the government. Well, I accept the explanation. In table seventeen, there are some um events and with the corresponding income and expenditure, including LIEs and LIEs, which are tier two and tier three sports events. Many of them have a surplus. I agree that the surpluses are not substantial. Perhaps it's a matter of thirty or forty thousand dollars for two of the events. Apparently, they were highly successful. In twenty fifteen to sixteen, the event MLIEA recorded a surplus of one point seven million dollars. Maybe you can say that the applicant was very successful. And there was another event in twenty sixteen to seventeen MLIEB. They had a surplus of three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. I'd like to know the nature of these events and why they were so successful. I believe um you should promote these events. We are talking about a tier-two event. Chairman, we have no information on specific cases. Can the Audit Commission help? Mister Chang, MLIEA was a table tennis event. MLIEB was a squash event. For tier-two events that carry a surplus or tier-three events, I have a question for the Director of Audit. In your sampling exercises, um, did you find a lot of profitable events? Or is it a case that um all the events were profitable? We conduct random sampling and we saw that many events recorded a surplus. I'd like to know the proportion of events with a surplus and the uh amounts. Can you let us know of the, the trend on the level of surplus? I'd like to know the trend.
Thank you, Chairman. We don't have sufficient data to provide a trend, but in general, in table seventeen, uh, the, the surplus isn't too large. The Deputy Chairman uh could identify two with a substantial surplus. Now, how many events have you examined? But the majority of your samples have a surplus. What is the sample size? Thank you, Chairman. Why did I say we cannot draw conclusions? Our audited report, uh, the sampling has to be representative. When we conduct value for money, we take a sample and we look at whether there's room for improvement. We're not looking at the overall situation. Here we see the typical surplus. You can say it's not large, even though it's uh from a sample size of ten, not being very representative. There are enough, there were one or two isolated cases with a substantial surplus. So in twenty eighteen nineteen, there was one case, MLIED, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars surplus. So how many samples did you take from twenty nineteen? Did you, did you find one item with a surplus and you took that? Uh, how did you, I just want to know what, how did you draw these samples? It was taken randomly. Could uh you invite Mister Chang to elaborate? For example, in table eleven, paragraph three point three, we have a hundred and ten in LIE and three in MME and we just collected ten samples and we stopped uh because of resources. Okay, I understand. Well, I think my questions uh are, are done for this. Do we have any other uh questions regarding part three? Uh, just a minute. We can have lunch at twelve thirty and we can give you more time. You can come back with your questions. It doesn't matter. We can, we can always revisit part three. Chairman, I think this is a good juncture to break. We can come back at two thirty. If we have any questions on part three, we can spend forty, fifty minutes on it before we move into part four. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, we have good control of time. Okay, thank you. Two thirty. Thank you. Two thirty.